Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, November 7. May I approach, do we take the roll call first?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghmaniski. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavell. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Killsmith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. And can we have a motion to waive the rules of council for the...
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the rules are waived. And can we join for the Pledge of Allegiance? As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise if you're able to for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing or at silence for a moment of silence at the end. And can we have our veterans come forward to say the Pledge of Allegiance? I hope everyone remembers that this Friday is Veterans Day. Chris, can we get a couple cheers up here for some of the veterans? Thank you. If anybody wants to sit, you can sit. Nobody wants one?
Chair.
Nobody? Okay. Sorry, Chris, thank you. Whenever you're ready, you start us. Who starts?
Attention, hand salute. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. At ease.
And I will just ask that we keep a moment of silence for all of our veterans. Okay. Please be seated. And you can all just stay right here if you sit on the bench because Councilwoman Strasburger is going to go first. But our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. If you all would sit on the ledge there behind you, we're going to let Councilwoman Strasburger has guests that need to move on. And we're going to keep you much longer. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. If everyone from the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition can come and join me up here, please. As they're making their way up here, I'll say, full disclosure, I started my civic participation in Pittsburgh by serving on the board of the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition. I was the chair of the Events Committee, and I can't say enough good things about this organization, this citizen-driven, resident-driven organization in Squirrel Hill that is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year, but at its treasure award coming up this Thursday. And when I think about people who are the doers or the people who are taking action in their community, sometimes people say, oh, there's a night market happening in Squirrel Hill. That's great. They did a great job. Well, the "they" is the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition and uncover Squirrel Hill and the people who volunteer their time to make these amazing events possible, and so on and so forth. So much more than the events. It's the gatekeeper around new development projects. It's ensuring that there are new master plans being developed for the organization. It's ensuring that we have beautiful spaces to sit and relax in as Marty Eisler has dedicated her, the volunteer portion of her life to throughout Squirrel Hill. So with that, whereas the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, SHUC, is a nonprofit community organization that gives the residents, institutions, and businesses of Squirrel Hill a platform to express their hopes and concerns in order to preserve and improve the quality of life in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood. And whereas, since its founding in 1972, SHUC has been an integral part of not only the neighborhood but the entire Pittsburgh civic community. It advocates for public safety, education, residential life, community development, and contributes to the betterment of Pittsburgh as a whole. And whereas, under the leadership of current Executive Director Maria Cohen, the Board of Directors chaired by Marty Eisler here, and we have Sophie Bean as well here who works for the organization, dedicated staff, SHUC has joined hands with other local civic groups to contribute to equitable and fair treatment for all of those living in Squirrel Hill and beyond. Whereas, the commitment, time, and resources provided by SHUC exposes community members of all ages to educational opportunities that enrich their lives and encourage citywide camaraderie. The Coalition's strong values and commitment to developing Squirrel Hill through volunteering has supported Pittsburgh-based institutions that appreciate the arts and sciences. And whereas, SHUC's devotion to both the citizens and environment of Pittsburgh encourages the protection and beautification of urban setting by planting trees, patrolling for litter, and adding more colorful plant life. And whereas, SHUC has spurred positive legislative and private action as the organization has expanded over the past five decades to support local businesses and educational centers in their goals to better the community. And whereas, the 50th anniversary of the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition's founding represents an opportunity to celebrate the progress of the past half-century while also refocusing on the necessary work that will be ahead to maintain and improve the life in the neighborhood. Whereas, ensuring that all residents, businesses, organizations, and institutions can build on their successes is a shared priority for the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition and City Council. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pittsburgh City Council congratulates Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition on 50 years of serving, representing, and advocating for community members, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare November 7, 2022, to be Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the support that we get from the city. We have a wonderful relationship with Public Works, with forestry, with construction, with all of the city departments that help us get the job done in terms of improving and maintaining the quality of life that we have in Squirrel Hill, and we thank you for that very much.
Just like to thank everyone. This is such an honor for the Coalition, and as part of the Coalition and watching the board and some of the amazing work that our board members have done, it's humbling to be honored and really look forward to 50 more years and more of serving the community. Thank you.
I just represent Squirrel Hill for a little bit.
Why do you say other people's names?
And I'm just going to mention that Marty is married to Bill Eisler, the former president of Pittsburgh Public Schools Board. With that said, it's time for our veterans. And I have two procs to be presented. So we'll do the parade proc first. Is that good? Okay. You don't have to stand if you don't want to. You can sit if you want. You can stand if you want. You can come up here with me if you want. It's up to you. Remember last time I put you on the mic for jokes? And I just want to make sure that you all know that this Saturday in Councilman Coghill's district at Our Lady of Victory Church, there's a dinner for all veterans and their families for free at the church, Our Lady of Victory Church. Do you have Mickey's number?
Yes.
Could you text her and ask her the time?
I will.
Sorry, thank you.
Text it to you?
Just say it, and when you're done, when you find it.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you. And we'll give you the time before we leave here today. Councilman Coghill will give you the time. But hopefully you all be able to come to Our Lady of Victory Church in Beachview on Saturday for a free dinner for all veterans and their families. Whereas, the Federation War Veterans Society Incorporated of Allegheny County, the Federation, and the City of Pittsburgh will hold its 103rd annual Veterans Day Parade on Friday, November 11 at 10:30 a.m., beginning on Liberty Avenue at 10th Street and proceeding along Liberty Avenue. And whereas, originating as Armistice Day, marking the end of World War I, Congress changed the name of the legal holiday to Veterans Day in 1954, the Federation of War Societies Incorporated preserves the memory of the signing of the armistice and honors all of the veterans who have dedicated their lives in service to our country from every American war as Congress intended it. And whereas, Pittsburgh's Veterans Day Parade helps to fulfill the mission of the Federation by teaching and fostering true patriotism and allegiance to the United States of America while honoring veterans and saluting current members serving the military. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh does hereby call upon all its citizens to observe November 11 as Veterans Day and to honor all war veterans living within the City of Pittsburgh and solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly to preserve our heritage and freedoms. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh commends the Federation of War Veterans Societies Incorporated and Allegheny County for their continued dedication and hard work in making each year's Veterans Day Parade a great success. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 11, 2022, to be Federation of War Veterans Society Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
The moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you so much for your service and thank you for continuing the parade. Whoever wants to say a few words, you can come here.
I'd like to stress to everyone that this is the 103rd Veterans Day Parade here in Pittsburgh, which is the longest consecutive parade for veterans in the country. Highlight this year for our parade, we will have a grand marshal of Henry Manella, who is the state commander of the VFW. We also will have an honorary grand marshal, who is the National Commander of the Military Order of Purple Hearts, James McCormick. The highlights, also, we'll have a military flyover coordinated with the 9/11 wing out here in Moon Township or Coriopolis. That will have a C-17 flyover along with two Blackhawk helicopters coordinated with the PA Army National Guard. So I'd like to invite you all to come to the Veterans Day Parade on Liberty Avenue this Friday. And along with that, I'd like to thank the City of Pittsburgh for their support over the years to make this possible, and I'd also like to thank City Council for this proclamation. Thank you all.
Do you all want to come to the mic there and just introduce yourselves for the public so they know who you are? Please.
Chuck DeSabato, Commander of the Veterans War Societies of Allegheny County.
You can bend the mic over too if somebody is in a wheelchair.
Paul Cusick from Bellevue, and the treasurer of the Veterans Society of Allegheny County for the parade. Thank you.
Jim Page, American Legion, Squirrel Hill. I'm also involved with the Federation. Thank you.
Bob Musser, trustee of the Federation, Allegheny County.
Melan Mullen and my husband, James Mullen, we were involved with the Federation. He was Vietnam veteran and honor guard. Thank you. Purple Heart recipient, too.
Richard Stefanik, VFW, Vice Commander, District 29, from Metna.
Albert Berlikowski, DAV Chapter 76. I want to thank council, especially...
She's my councilperson.
Rocky Blyer. I'm a board member of the National Flag Foundation, and I say that because National Flag Foundation and the military, the Purple Heart, is supportive of the 240th anniversary of Purple Heart recipients, and we are pushing forward to make that a law that they will all be recognized by name in Congress and for the Department of Defense.
Phil Feif, Umar Jr., Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee for the FUTS, Chairman of the Homeless Committee. I'm on the Legislative and Executive Committee, past District Commander, past adjutant for 12 years. I'm the liaison service officer for Chapter 76, and the DEC and past commander, and I'm on the Veterans Advice Committee for Washington County. Thank you.
Anthony Warner, I'm the President of VFW Riders for District 29. We just want to thank you, this council, for letting us ride our bikes with the parade and also getting us a little closer to the front so we don't fall out with overheating bikes. So thank you so much, and we really appreciate the opportunity to ride with you guys. So thank you.
Oh, no.
I normally wouldn't do that. I'm Dick Silk. I'm a past commander of the Federation, and I have some news things you might not have heard, alternative news, you might not have seen this. There was an archaeologist that lost his job. So people said, what does that mean? Well, pretty much his career is in ruins. Some are worse than others.
Now you know why I said, uh-oh. You're just getting started. A Mount Washington resident. But go ahead. Go ahead.
This is a biblical question. I know you've all studied the Bible cover to cover. You probably already know this, but I got to ask you anyway. Do you remember when they first mentioned insurance in the Bible? The hint is Adam and Eve. It's when they needed more coverage. All right.
Get the hook. Somebody get the hook.
Get them out of here.
So does all members want to come for this, or do you want to read the other proc, the second proc, and then we'll come for photos?
It's up to you how you want it.
Let's read it.
Let's read the second proc, just.
Yes.
Okay? And then we'll have all members of council come up. But I do want to add, and I should have added this earlier, that for today and for the immediate future, the City Channel team is setting up a single camera in council chambers and can host, record, and stream meetings, providing the same hybrid setup as in place since summer 2021. But they cannot televise live today and in the future until they fix this equipment on the TV channels. But they do have it via Zoom and, what's the other one? The YouTube channel, as soon as they fix the equipment. But you are live on those other platforms. Whereas, the National Flag Foundation is a Pittsburgh-based national nonprofit and nonpolitical foundation dedicated to education about the American flag and honoring those who have served to support our country and its national symbol. And whereas, the National Flag Foundation, in conjunction with the Military Order of the Purple Heart Marine Corps League and the United Steelworkers, will mark the 240th anniversary of the inception of the Purple Heart with the Light to Unite National Day of Unity on Friday, November 11, 2022. And that might be good timing right after an election. And whereas, the NFF will commemorate the 240th anniversary of our nation's Purple Heart Award on Veterans Day by lighting buildings in cities purple, alternatively in red, white, and blue, as a show of national unity and support for our military heroes. And I want to thank Mayor Gani for agreeing to light the City County building as well. Altogether, more than 50 buildings across more than 30 cities will see key locations light to unite in support of our nation's wounded veteran community. And whereas, in addition, led by the home of the National Flag Foundation in Pittsburgh at the Coppers Building and One World Trade Center in New York, designated buildings across the U.S. will also display a ceremonial Marine Corps League color guard for the lightings. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the National Flag Foundation for their dedication to the United States of America and the veterans and active service members who have served and continue to serve to protect the rights of our citizens. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 11, 2022, to be Light to Unite Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
The moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you. And you can stop there and just say a few words. Say a few words about...
First of all, thank you on behalf of the board, the National Flag Foundation, for giving us the opportunity as well as the recognition, and to the President of City Council for gracious introduction. Her comment about uniting America, that's part of the whole theme of the Light to Unite. The expectation was that in these divided times, maybe there's one day, one time where people can come together, whether they be on one side or the other of the political aisle, to honor those that have served and suffered. I also wanted to mention that the more you look and the more you delve into the National Flag Foundation, it's truly a jewel of Pittsburgh. It's been understated for over half a century and now starting to make more of a mark. It's headquartered now in the Coppers Tower and is now lit red, white, and blue 50 days a year to commemorate each national holiday and each weekend attendant to it. Our mission is very simple, to educate on civics and the American flag and to honor those who serve to protect it. It's a nonpolitical, nonprofit foundation that you'll be hearing more about. I also wanted to mention that this year's initiative for the 240th anniversary of the Purple Heart, consistent with our mission, focuses on the Purple Heart recipients and bringing much-needed recognition to them. We're honored to have Rocky Blyer, obviously a storied Pittsburgh Steeler, but graciously agreed to be a member of our board and naturally a decorated Vietnam veteran who serves many causes unselfishly but has been the catalyst for why we're where we are on a national level. So thank you to the City, City Council, to the mayor for allowing the light in the building, and again to the President of City Council for this honor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I do want to thank you again. I can't thank you enough. I think council feels this way. Can't thank you enough for your service over the years and the continuing efforts that you put forward to educate the public and to make sure that the veterans are honored across the country. So thank you very much for all that you do. Carmela, thank you. I know this is a difficult time for you. Carmela's husband passed away, was very active in this, so I want to thank you for being here today. Mr. Blyer, you're just a champion to us on and off the field, so thank you for everything that you've done. And just all of our veterans. But I want to invite all members up for a photo, and I do want to say that yesterday we also were able to celebrate the banners, for veteran banners finally going up in our district. We waited a long time to have them up, and we did them in Mount Washington, and our next place will be likely in Westwood because we want to make sure we get Albert Berlikowski's.
Yeah, good job, Teresa.
Come up, everyone. Come up for the photo. Let's all take a photo. I'm going to get my photo from here, too. I have to get Anthony. Anthony could be your PR guy. I know here I have the proclamation covered. These are the light-up ones. These are the light-up ones, and then these are the parade ones. These are the parade ones. These are all parade, can you hear? Thank you.
Go up there and do what you're supposed to do. Don't come back here telling me nothing. Go up there and do it. See how you picture.
You didn't really want to.
He's still waiting for your call. Well, you're from footpath. Yeah, I go here with my cousin.
What's your cousin? Too merry. Too merry. My cousin Tony was a president eight years ago. And my dad, my daughter, you do two-day brotherhoods. For his parents and my daughter.
Did you take anybody else's?
No, I don't think I have.
Oh, okay, good.
Thank you.
When you say you're still waiting for your call, I said, I guess maybe I...
No, no. Like I mentioned, I'm on the committee.
What's the difference? You're all babies. All bleeding.
Is there a sergeant or...
This is actually the reason for me to be here.
Hey, Lou, how are you?
Dixway.
Oh, it's a shame.
A lot of people tell me that.
It made things easier, didn't it? It was kind of like a road map.
And Councilman Burgess, you have five to be read into the record. Madam Clerk?
I wouldn't have done so much.
Councilman Burgess presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City...
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry.
And the efforts that they did this year.
Not him.
Digital.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure to meet you.
Well, thank you.
Because I find it so much good to hear you.
That's scary. Thanks.
Have a great one.
Don't forget, we have time before you come up.
Okay, we have to continue with council business. Let's continue. Madam Clerk, we have five proclamations to be read into the record, starting with Councilman Burgess. Could you please read that?
Councilman Burgess presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 4, 2022 to be Dr. Marcia Sturdivant Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 4, 2022 to be Dr. Cyril H. Weck Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Also, Councilman Burgess also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 4, 2022 to be Judge Kim Berkeley Clark Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is that it?
And Councilman Burgess also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 4, 2022 to be Serena Marie Taylor Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Burgess presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 4, 2022 to be Tim Stevens Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
And can we have a motion to approve those procs?
Motion is approved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Procs are approved. And I have one to be read into the record for myself and Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilwoman, would you care if they're read together? Okay, please read them together, Madam Clerk.
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, November 19, 2022 to be Jennifer Reitzel Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare November 4, 2022 to be Dear Zoe Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve both proclamations. In a second?
Second.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations are approved. Thank you. And that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, profanity and threats will not be permitted. And maybe we have the first speaker, please. And I have the first speaker registered as Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Souver, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. My PC today is copyright RLM 2022. Citizens embrace concern regarding the vote, but eliminate the con, take back the vote. Concern ultra of Pittsburgh City Council, but also a conundrum, is the vote. There's both concern and con. By that I mean, any U.S. citizen can check money deposit in a bank, but no citizen can check a bona fide vote deposit. I want every citizen to be able to control his or her vote. Biden, Obama, Trump rummaging around, saying nothing about this fundamental issue. Vote by voter verification, copyright RLM Viet. Individual control in institutional neighborhood context ends this con, in my view. On the 26th of October, I said, one, we need to establish an elected neighborhood institutional context for an individual to control his or her vote. Two, establish neighborhood vote practices revolving around the primacy of the paper ballot. And today, three, I think we need to establish vote encryption protocols. One, the citizen change, comes to encrypt, decides to encrypt, chooses to encrypt or not encrypt, and to encrypt via one's own approach or someone else's. Second, the citizen enters the encryption code to close her or his primary paper vote, secondary cyber vote. Three, the citizen marks the primary paper ballot in ink and signs it and touchscreens the secondary computer ballot. Four, A, the citizen closes a plastic folder over the paper ballot and pressing the encryption code into the digital lock and it snaps shut. We are pursuing patents for this. And four, B, the citizen closes the computer ballot folder by entering her or his individual encryption code. And five, the citizen takes the encrypted vote receipt with him or her or a vote photocopy. Then, number four, we need to establish vote by voter verification procedures that allow the citizen to check both the paper ballot and the cyber ballot. But the vote is actually literally in the neighborhood.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is John Henneran. Are they on? Oh, okay. I just wasn't sure. He's talking, but we're not hearing. Is that something with the, you can't get him? I'm gonna just let him continue, because will that come up? Yes, we cannot hear you, but we're gonna let you continue for those who can read your comments online.
As of last week, there are new signs posted down by the river saying that at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, the city will quote, "conduct a general cleaning of these premises." So here's what that means. On Thursday morning, we should expect to see a city garbage truck haul up and park somewhere down under the bridges, and there'll be plenty of sanitation workers and police officers and maybe some outreach workers from county agencies and nonprofits, but that's no guarantee. Cops will tell people to scram, and the sanitation workers will load their belongings into the back of the garbage truck. It's going to be a shameful thing to see. Now, I recognize that this is not an act of council, but I do have one question specifically for Councilmember Lavelle, who represents the downtown area. On Thursday, when city workers begin tossing your constituents' belongings into the back of a dump truck, where will you be and what will you have to say?
That's not gonna work. Is that over? Okay. And I'm gonna apologize that your sound was coming off and on throughout your statement. So if you'd like to submit a statement to the clerk's office, she'll make sure that all members of council receive it. Okay. With that said, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council?
I thought he wanted to speak. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I live at 715 Mercer Street up in the Hill. I told you before, and I'll say it again, I believe that when you see it, you remember it, you hear it, you forget it, but when you know it, you know it. I wanted to make sure you saw that I'm saying our votes, not just mine, our votes count. And I'm gonna vote for Federin. And the reason why is because I believe that Federin, and you ask the people in his community that he's worked for, plenty of people, when I say Federin, oh yes, he brought back Brad up. He brought food that he gave to the poor, furniture and so on. So Federin is gonna be for me. You're just gonna vote for whoever you want. I don't think that we should do Dr. Oz. I took Nutrition, and it says that the doctor should do no harm, but he's talking against him. Instead of trying to tell him what medicine he should take to help him get better, but that's the wind. And if he got five houses in New Jersey, so they say. Now, this sign, I brought it again. This sign says, for Ms. Gross, this is especially for you, because I do want to apologize again because I was very disrespectful to her. When she brought in the people for a bill that will stop the pregnant woman in prison, if she's having a baby, instead of her chaining her to the bed, and you brought it to City Council. Now, Summer Lee had it over in County Council. I'm saying that Summer Lee must be a bad sister, because they had spent like $100 million to keep her from getting into office, and only because she is fighting for the voices. These women don't have any voices at all in prison. Now, I am a little, I have to take my time, and I'm asking you to have patience with me. Today is the day that my son was killed. Today is the day that my son died. And I'm sitting there and I'm praying, Lord, let me speak in a way that they can understand me. And here comes Mr. Burgess back there to tell me that these signs, you have no business. But most of the time, he won't even come in here when we're speaking. I'll start peeping in the door or wait till we get finished, and then he big yellow come strutting in. Let me tell you something. I'm gonna still keep coming, and I'm gonna say what I believe in, whether you want to hear it or not. And I'm not bringing my grandbaby, because he said my grandbaby, my five-year-old had no business speaking. Whereas, I'm still, I still come back with you, when you had your baby on your lap taking care of city business. Now, if my grandbaby can't speak, I don't think a baby should be in here. Same way O'Connor did the same thing. You know, this Good Old Boys Network, the ends are showing your asses today. You are showing them, anytime that you got this big yellow man come back here, because you know he has a thing with dark, conflicted women and men. The woman that was in his class that said that he was something else.
Your time is expired.
Yes, I know my time is up.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Please come forth. State your name and neighborhood for the record, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rick Nor, and I'm from the Brookline Neighborhood in the South Hills. Today, I had no intention of speaking here today about any issues. I kind of enjoy being a spectator. But there's one article that came to my attention this past week, an article by Julia Felton about proposing changes to the council rules on public comment. As the old saying goes, if it's not broke, don't fix it. You're opening a Pandora's box here. You're limiting free speech. The rules have been like this as long as I can remember, and I'm pretty old. So all I can say is, don't touch that, because really, you're gonna cause more dissension, more problems. We lack civility in this country, and everybody should have a right to speak for at least three minutes. This is the only public forum we have for the city. We can't do this in the mayor's office. A lot of times, we're ignored. But this is a forum for all city residents to listen to, no matter what the subject matter. You can tolerate all the issues that don't particularly pertain to the council, but it's a matter of opinion as to what that is. And also, I would like to say that if you do this, I just want to look at as an example what happens across our country, the lack of civility between people. And now, our country is really entering a dangerous phase. We've already been there, if you remember the attack on January 6th, and it seems like the situation's getting worse. We have to come together as a people, as a nation, and make this a better place to live, no matter whether on the federal level, the state level, or the local level. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, move on to the next order of business, which is presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Burgess.
Thank you, Councilman.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 907, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Parking, Chapter 541, General Parking Regulations by revising Section 541.04B entitled Smart Loading Zones to extend the Smart Loading Zone Pilot Program from one year to three years. Bill Number 908, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Swindell Bridge construction project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,700,000, an increase of $900,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 95% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,500, a zero-dollar increase from previously executed agreement. And Bill Number 909, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc., for project design management services and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the construction and preliminary engineering phases, increasing the total not to exceed to $3,157,268.61 from said agreement, an increase of $1,206,117.85.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Governmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 911, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the URA for administrative services for Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program awards for some not to exceed $250,000 over five years and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 912, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Justice for purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $539,580.21 for the purpose of providing funding for training and capacity expansion for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and Department of Public Safety for crisis response. Bill Number 913, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 621 of 2017, authorizing the Mayor, Director of Public Safety, and Director of Finance to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended lease agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Trust for Cultural Resources for providing a police substation at the Lantern Building in downtown Pittsburgh beginning September 2017. The amended lease agreement or agreement shall provide for a 18-month extension at identical terms not to exceed $15,000 annually. And Bill Number 914, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 725 of 2021, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a fifth amended professional services agreement or agreements with Johnson Controls for Continued Security Camera Integration and Support Services at an additional cost of $381,700 and extending such agreements for an additional six months and increasing the overall agreement compensation to $6,570,257.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 915, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 648 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Mar Dussel to provide auditing services to the City of Pittsburgh by exercising the additional option years to extend the term of the agreement for two years. Total cost. of the agreement for two years, total cost not to exceed $672,859 over five years. Bill Number 916, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Christopher P. Boyle in the total amount of $9,500 for expert fees associated with the litigation matter filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania against the city of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 917, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Gleason and Associates, P.C., in the total amount of $11,184 for services in connections with the case filed. Bill Number 918, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Joyce Haines and her attorneys, Simon &amp; Simon, in the amount of $35,000 relating to the full and final settlement of the case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 919, Resolution Amending Resolution 942 of 2021, Providing for an Agreement or Agreements and a Lease or Leases by and between the city of Pittsburgh and First Vehicle Services pursuant to which first vehicle will furnish all work and services needed to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet by increasing the 2022 not to exceed amount by $600,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Bobby Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 920, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant for Project Scoping of Sawmill Run Boulevard in the amount of $300,000 with a local match of $100,000 for a total project cost of $400,000, and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one appointment and one communication. Let's take the appointment first, please.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 921, Resolution Appointing Ivan Usuroe as a member of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for term to expire May 31st, 2024.
Thank you. And I don't know what the will of the bodies, if you wanna hold for an interview or just approve? Members? Does anybody want to interview?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The appointment's approved. Thanks, that was easy. And one communication?
Bill Number 922, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the Office of Human Resources and Civil Service for Paula Kellerman and Charlene Holder per the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018.
Thank you.
Motion to read. I'm sorry, Madam President. Motion to read, receiving file.
Motion second?
Second.
And all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman. And I will move on to any unfinished businesses or any unfinished business before city council. Seeing none, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilman Lavelle, Lavelle Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 904, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for November 2nd, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 868, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an encroachment easement with Jason and Stephanie Small to permit certain structures to encroach city property. Bill Number 869, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing enterprise resource planning by $157,705 and increasing information system modernization by $157,705.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 905, Report to the Committee on Public Safety Services for November 2nd, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 867, Resolution Authorizing the Citizen Police Review Board to enter into an agreement or agreements or contracts with Attorney William F. Ward of Rothman Gordon, P.C., for professional services to assist in the legal representation of the Citizen Police Review Board for a period of three years. Said agreement or agreements or contracts shall not exceed $45,000 per year for 2023, 2024, and 2025, subject to the annual allocation by city council.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman, Councilperson.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 906, Report to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November 2nd, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 843, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County is Block 56F, Lot 176, located at 201 Glen Colladge Street, Council District Number 5. And Bill Number 866, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 532 Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on the Pittsburgh Plan for Peace and Group Violence Initiative chaired by Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. There will also be no meetings tomorrow, Tuesday, November 8th, due to the general election. Get out and vote. On Wednesday, November 9th, council will hold our pre-agenda interviews at 9:00 a.m., followed by the standing committees meeting at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. Also, Wednesday, November 9th, at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bills 2022-0747 and 2022-0754 as they relate to the CMU Institutional Master Plan. This week, council will hold our regular meetings of council on Monday to November 14th, next week, I'm sorry, will hold our meetings on Monday, November 14th, at 10:00 a.m., commencing with Mayor Gani's 2023 Budget Address. So next Monday, the mayor will have his budget addressed at 10:00 a.m., and we'll have our meeting following. The standing committees meeting will be Tuesday, November 15th, at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council meetings webpage by the deadline. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
It's a move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Means?
Aye.
Thank you.[1745.03]